Yes. Ms. Harriet, please let the record show that all board members are present except for Danielle King. And now we're going to move to the Pledge of Allegiance. Chief Communication Officer, Mr. Stephen Hall will introduce students from the Academy of Exploration to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
That's right. Good evening, board members. We are so pleased to introduce that group of students. We celebrated the opening of the new Academy of Exploration classrooms with a ribbon-cutting ceremony last week. Many of you were there, and many were there to also tour the former annex of the Hillcrest High School campus. And what an amazing renovation that has been. To continue that celebration, we have invited several Academy of Exploration students to lead our Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to invite them to come forward as I call their names. We have Evan Byrne, Rayden Kling Smith, and Raquel Rodriguez. Would you please come forward? I'd like to share a little bit about what your teachers have to say. Rayden is a fifth grader at the Academy of Exploration, so this is his first year to experience this innovative program. He is curious and passionate about STEM, so he will put the extensive makerspace to good use. Evan and Raquel are sixth graders this year. Evan loves animals and being outdoors. She is currently one of the animal handlers in the Explore Room. Raquel loves all things related to art and creativity, and she has served as a student leader and a presenter for AOE. If you were here to support these AOE students, or you had a role in making their new classroom space a reality, please stand so that we may honor you as well. And now, we ask those who are able to please stand, and we will join in as our students lead the Pledge of Allegiance. And students, whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Raquel, we're going to take a photo. In the audience with us tonight, we have a group of Hillcrest High School students accompanied by their teacher, Mrs. Courtney Damren. Can we see all of you stand, please? They are here to observe tonight's school board meeting because of their interest in becoming future teachers. Mrs. Damren, would you and your class, please give us a little shout-out back there, real some spirit, Hillcrest spirit? These students are Hillcrest seniors who are currently participating in the College and Career Academy Teaching Pathway. Mrs. Damren said they had requested the opportunity to attend a Board of Education meeting. The College and Career Academy provides students a small learning community where they have the opportunity to earn college credit or industry certifications while engaging with potential employers and community organizations related to their field of study. Please join us in welcoming these students. Thank you all very much. Next, we're going to preview our Hall of Fame induction, which will occur very soon. One moment. Next week, Springfield Public Schools will induct five alumni. Lee, original members of the Ozark Mountain Daredevils. David Harrison is a 1955 graduate of Central High School. He published his first children's book in 1969, which has sold more than 2 million copies. Since then, he has authored and published more than 100 books. In July of 2023, Governor Mike Parson named him Missouri's poet laureate. David's support of literacy and public education in Springfield is extensive and includes serving six years on this very Board of Education. He is also the first Hall of Fame inductee who has an SPS Elementary School named after him. Dan Arnall is a 1992 graduate of Hillcrest High School. As a student there, he was instrumental in starting the first HTV broadcast journalism class. During his professional career, he has won an Emmy Award and an Edward R. Murrow Award for breaking news coverage. He currently oversees all news programming for MSNBC reports. Steve Cash, Randall Chowning, and Larry Lee brought their individual talents as musicians, vocalists, and songwriters together to form the Ozark Mountain Daredevils. In 1973, they signed a recording deal with A&amp;M Records. Their first album included the hit song "If You Want to Get to Heaven," sung by Randall and co-written by Steve. Their biggest hit, "Jackie Blue," was written by Steve and Larry. Steve, a 1964 graduate of Parkview High School, performed with the Daredevils for more than four decades. He passed away in 2019. Larry and Randall met while attending Glendale High School. They graduated in 1965 and 1968, respectively. Randall was the founder of the Daredevils and performed as the band's lead vocalist and lead guitarist. After performing with the Daredevils, Larry spent more than 20 years working in Nashville as a songwriter, session musician, and record producer. During that time, he helped create 13 number-one hits for Alabama. He also sang on several Jimmy Buffett records and toured as a member of Buffett's band. Randall and Larry both received the Quill Award from the Missouri Writers Hall of Fame, which is the first time it was presented to songwriters. These outstanding SPS graduates will be honored during the October 5th luncheon, when we will share more about their achievements. Let's give them a round of applause. Tonight, we begin the special recognition for staff members who will celebrate their 25, 30, 35, and 40-year service anniversaries to SPS during this school year. This year, we have nearly 40 employees who will be achieving these significant milestones. Between now and November's meeting, we are inviting these special employees to join us so that we may recognize their dedication to our school district and our students. With us this evening are several of those employees. The first employee we are recognizing has served SPS for 40 years. Tim Mort, would you please come forward?
Good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Tim works as a parts and fuel systems specialist in the Transportation Department. He began his career with SPS as a bus driver in 1983. Please join us in thanking Tim Mort for his dedicated service to Springfield Public Schools. Dr. Lathan, Mr. Christ, if you would come forward, we would like to take a photo of this recognition. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Beth Nickel, would you please come forward? Beth is a teacher at Studi Alternative Center. She has spent her entire career at SPS, working with our alternative programs. She initially worked as a substitute and teacher's aide at Bailey, which is now known as Studi. Beth, we thank you for your 35-year commitment to Springfield Public Schools and to Studi Alternative Center. Next, also celebrating 35 years is Jeff Rogers, who currently serves as the district's wellness coordinator and coaches soccer for Glendale High School. Jeff, would you please come forward? Our next honoree has not only served SPS for 30 years, she has worked at the same location for that entire time. Debbie Eliason, would you please come forward? Debbie is the custodian at Watkins Elementary School, and we will hear more about her service to our students and staff there in just a few minutes. Congratulations, Debbie, 30 years at Watkins Elementary. And don't get too comfortable, Debbie, because you're going to be right back up here in just a few minutes. So, finally, please join us in welcoming Janine Forrester, who is a teacher at Hickory Hills K-8 School. Janine began her career at SPS 25 years ago as a Spanish teacher at Pleasant View and has served as an assistant principal and a principal in our district. Congratulations, Janine. We look forward to continuing to honor SPS employees, celebrating service milestones during our October and our November meetings. In keeping with our SPS United theme, we are recognizing a most valuable player at each of our school board meetings this year. This recognition reminds us that teamwork and a collective vision can positively impact SPS students and staff. You've already met tonight's MVP. Her positive attitude and her commitment to excellence ensures that students at Watkins Elementary School have a quality learning environment each and every day. Let's watch this video to learn more about our MVP for September, Debbie Eliason.
My name is Debbie Eliason, and I am the head custodian at Watkins Elementary. You will see her buzzing around the building, making sure that our building is beautiful, cleaning up, straightening up, putting in work orders, making sure that Watkins is the place to be for students and staff. I started here at Watkins on September 20th of 93. I tend to be very positive, a very positive person. I like to greet the kids in the morning, and it makes me so excited when they greet me first.
We're getting a storm shelter gymnasium, and she has attended some of the planning meetings in my place if I was expected elsewhere, because she can answer questions about our building that I can't.
Very excited about getting this gym. I have wanted this gym for so long.
She's been here for 30 years. She probably should have her name engraved on some piece of concrete somewhere here.
I was part of the reason we started Girls on the Run. We went and talked to the assistant principal at the time, and he said, "I think that's a great idea." So he set us up with the coach for Girls on the Run, and so we've been doing it ever
She supports our strategic plan because she supports us having a quality learning environment. Our space is safe. It's functional. It's neat. It's clean. She takes pride in that, and that supports the work that we do during the school day.
I can't imagine working anywhere else. This is home to me. Working here at Watkins has been the most memorable experience in my life. I wouldn't want to be anywhere else. Moving forward, as MVP, I just plan to keep doing what I'm doing with a smile every moment.
It's not a pen.
And this recognition is especially timely, as Monday is Custodian Appreciation Day, and Debbie is one of about 190 custodians at SPS who work to keep our facilities looking great every day. Congratulations, Debbie, and thank you again. And that concludes Honoring Excellence for this evening's meeting. Thank you very much.
Well, congratulations, staff members, Debbie, you know, for your dedication to our greatest assets, our students. We appreciate all you do for them. Okay, next on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Our recommended action is that the board approve the agenda as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Board Member, Dr. Thomas State.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Board Member, Dr. Mahanakani.
Turn it on.
Let's vote. Next, we'll go on to public comments. We now come to the portion of the meeting where we hear from our speakers. The Board of Education welcomes comments about the issues being discussed. The Board uses this time in our meeting to listen to the public, but will not comment or engage with the public during this meeting. The Board allows up to 10 speakers per public comment period. The Board Chair will call on individuals in the order in which they signed up. Substitutions are not permitted. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, and will be timed by the Board Secretary. Comments must be acceptable for a business and family-friendly environment. Inappropriate language, gestures, or personal attacks will not be tolerated at all. It is inappropriate to address the Board about individual students or individual staff members by name in this open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the schools or at the district office. If you have material that you want to share, please place them in the tray on the podium, and they will be distributed to the board members following the meeting. First member, first person to call it is Megan Patrick.
My name is Megan Patrick. I am the local chapter chair of Moms for Liberty, Green County. Our organization has been discussed a couple times at previous board meetings, and I would like to be, it's been discussed in a negative light, I would like to be clear, Moms for Liberty is not a hate group. No matter what the Southern Poverty Law Center or the News Leader says, we are moms, dads, grandparents, aunts, uncles. We are parents who are concerned. We are parents who are standing up for some of the nonsense happening in our public schools. We are parents who want our children to be educated and not indoctrinated. The reason I'm here to speak today is recently our organization offered pocket constitutions to every eighth grader in Green County. I believe all of you received a PDF of that. I have them here, but I will give, you guys can have your own. You would have seen, if you looked at it, that it is strictly just the Constitution and nothing else. We were told by SPS that these constitutions cannot be given out to students. They could be placed on a community table with flyers only if we added the disclaimer that they were not supported by SPS. While we respect the need for transparency and accuracy, we believe that requiring disclaimers on a pocket constitution sends a message that undermines the importance of teaching the Constitution. It's also worth noting that all other school districts in the Green County have graciously accepted them, as well as 300,000 pocket constitutions have been accepted and handed out throughout the United States. There is only a handful of school districts in the United States that have not accepted them. The Constitution is not a partisan document, and it should not be treated as such. It belongs to all Americans regardless of political affiliation or endorsement, and should be embraced as an educational resource that fosters critical thinking and civic engagement. By requiring disclaimers, we risk diluting the significance of these pocket constitutions and sending a message that may discourage their use. Instead, we should encourage our students to study the Constitution, ask questions, and engage in discussions about its profound impact on our nation's history. I would like to request that the Board have a vote on this matter. Please consider the value of providing all the eighth graders with pocket constitutions. They are learning about it this year. Throughout all the United States, our eighth graders learn about the importance of our country and its founding documents. Please consider the value of providing it without disclaimers and join in other Green County districts in providing our students with the opportunity to learn about the Constitution, to ask questions, and to grow into active, informed citizens who cherish and protect our fundamental rights. Thank you. And I left one of these for each of you.
Thank you. Megan. Next up is Darlene Mavens.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak to the Board today. I'm here in response to a statement that was issued by the Board and the review of Policy AC. It's a court opinion, "The public has a greater interest in preventing schools, school districts, and school officials in whom the public places its trust to educate children and serve as role models from retaliating against students who complain about alleged bias, discrimination, harassment in our schools. The public has an interest in preventing schools, school districts, and school officials from intentionally misleading investigative bodies. The public has an interest in preventing schools, school districts, and school officials from allowing past and petty grievances between schools and athletic coaches, from influencing decision-making that has a real impact on the life of a child. And the public has an interest in preventing schools, school districts, and school officials from using a child entrusted in their care as a pawn in a tug-of-war between adult coaching staffs and athletic directors." Those were the findings of the Honorable Judge Derek Akram. SPS Board members, it is to you who have the ultimate responsibility to hold accountable those that were a part of this process and the compliance to the SPS Board Policies AC. I hope and urge you all to obtain the depositions and transcripts of the testimonies at the trial. You will find evidence of fraud, malice, and collusion on the parts of the SPS Athletic Directors, Kickapoo Athletic Director, and Head Coach. SPS bylaws allow student athletes to receive instruction from a coach of another school. Working is allowed by the MSHA bylaws. Three individuals agreed it was undisputed, and they had no personal knowledge of any workout with my son since the spring of his freshman year. A two-year period passed from the spring of his freshman year to the spring of his junior year. We submitted a written transfer from Kickapoo for the well-being of our son. On April 14th, we made a written report under Policy AC as to the toxic environment, including racial bias, racial microaggressions, and discrimination. This was received, reviewed, and individuals had knowledge that they had to report under Policy AC. Policy AC required an immediate investigation and finding. Instead, they worked together to gather related information about workouts with my son and other individuals. There's nothing within MSHA bylaws which states or provides notice to myself, my husband, or my son, or other athletes that if a student athlete receives instruction from a coach of another school as allowed by MSHA bylaws, that allowed instruction is considered or a factor of undue influence under MSHA bylaws. These individuals worked together on the Kickapoo response to the Glendale submission of a hardship that expressly spoke of a toxic environment due to race and violation of Policy AC. There occurred no action and compliance with the Policy AC prior to these individuals submitting information to MSHA for the express purpose of triggering the ineligibility of my son.
Thank you, Ms. Mavens. Appreciate your help. Yep, thank you. Okay. There are no more speakers. Next on our agenda, the Consent Agenda Items, the Minutes, the K-Cob, Compliance Plan, Health Insurance Plan, and Personnel. These items were all presented at the September 12th study session for review, and we were given opportunity to ask questions. Our recommended action is that the Board approve the Consent Agenda Item 3.01 through 6.01. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved, Dr. Thomas State. And seconded by Board Member Makoski. Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Motion passes. Okay. So, we move on to 7.01, Board Policy Adoption Revisions. The policies listed were brought forward at the September... Thank you. Revision have been made to Board Policy BBF. School Board Member Ethics. Are there any comments or questions from the Board members? Okay. Board Member, Dr. Mahanakani.
Thank you. As I had stated before, I really like the updated MSBA policy that is in green. We've taken some lines from the previous policy, and Dr. Lathan was gracious and accepted my request for some additional lines. For example, number 11, encourage ongoing communication between board members and stakeholders, as well as number 10, improve boardmanship by studying educational issues and regularly assess the educational system in order to provide accountability for the district. Added on line one, that we exercise leadership and vision planning policymaking evaluation advocacy. We added to further the academic achievement of students. Item two, render all decisions based on debatable facts and independent judgment. Item two, render all decisions based on debatable facts and independent judgment rather than a succumbing to the influence of individuals or special interest groups. As well as number five, maintain an open environment where each member is empowered to freely express opinions, concerns, and ideas, but once the Board has acted, accept the will of the majority. I did not come up with these in a vacuum. I presume that these were line items from the last MSBA adoption, only because when I went to our regional boards, I think it was Ozark, Nixa, Branson, and Bolivar, they all had the same verbiage. So, I picked the ones I liked, that I felt reflected some of our sentiments, but were perhaps a bit better worded. But I do take issue on number seven and number eight. I would like to strike the first clause in both of those. So, number seven says, indicates, "Follow the chain of command and direct others to do the same." Period. And then there's a second statement, "Personnel complaints and concerns will be directed to the superintendent." I would like to suggest to strike the first sentence, only because I believe that that is best suited for a board norm perhaps. I think it is subjective and vague. I always follow the chain of command, but I think it's, we are at the top of the chain of the command. So, what I don't want to do is, I don't want to get into micromanaging a Board member because I don't want it to be contrary to number 11, encourage ongoing communication between members and stakeholders. I think that is something that is understood, that is how we operate, and like I said, it perhaps belongs in a board norm. I don't feel that it elevates to the level of a policy. On number eight, there are two parts with an "and" in between. The first says, "Take no private action that will compromise the Board or administration and respect the confidentiality of information that is privileged under applicable law." I suggest that we strike the first part and leave, "Respect the confidentiality of information." That reads like a policy. It is what we do. It is good policy. Taking no private action, again, I feel that that could be contrary to encouraging ongoing communication. I think that is a very subjective statement. It is, it will be interpreted differently, and I don't think it belongs here. Well, I can go on, but I'll reserve my further comments for a second round.
Are there any other comments?
Well, I appreciate the changes that were made and I like the language that is included because I do think there's a need for Board members to be reminded of a chain of command. That chain of command does not mean that we're just at the top of the list and we don't get to have to work towards anybody. Part of what we learned in MSBA was that Board members have to deal with the chain of command when we visit buildings. We deal with the chain of command when we interact with the staff at, here at Kraft, because they're not our staff members. And so, I think it is something that needs to be a part of policy, and I think it's necessary because we have had some issues. And so, same with taking no private action that will compromise the Board or administration. While there may be some question about how to interpret that, I think this is another one that we have seen as somewhat problematic potentially, and that needs to stay in our policy as a reminder to Board members of their roles and responsibilities.
May I?
Yes.
Well, I want to give everybody an opportunity to speak, but maybe I can...
I'd like to. Okay. Board Members, McCoskey?
Well...
Are you okay?
Well, can I just, 20 seconds?
Board Member Dr. Mohamed McConney.
I think if this was my first year in service, I would look at those and not think twice. But, given the history of this Board and how it has selectively censored the actions and speech of Board members, I hesitate to leave this in our policy. Perhaps I can give you an example. Speaking with teachers, I've been told, would be taking private action that compromises the administration because it is not following the chain of command. I think that is contrary to encouraging ongoing communication between Board members and staff and parents. I think we should make every effort to involve parents in the education of their children. And I hesitate to put any language, again, I note, in a policy, not necessarily norms that we already all follow, I hesitate to put language in a policy that could potentially tie the hands of a current or a future School Board member to carry their due diligence in communicating with staff and parents and stakeholders at large.
Okay. Thank you. Board Member McCoskey?
Thank you very much. I tend to agree with Board Member Mohamed McConney for a couple reasons, and one is, as you indicate, not being able to stymie or prevent a Board member from exercising what I believe would be their right as an elected official, that many people have elected us to come to this Board and to be able to have that flexibility to be able to communicate whenever we can. I do think that striking that really doesn't make too much of a difference since we already have board norms, and I think that that would be acceptable to strike that first sentence out in number seven and continue to stick to board norms. Taking private action, I might have an issue with that because, I'll just give you an This weekend, I sat at the dining room table of some parents, and they had explained to me some discipline problems that Springfield Public Schools has, and especially with their student and their child. And so, I would kind of put number eight, the first sentence, I would take that, it would prohibit me from taking that move and actually following through with what I was elected to do. I think it allows us to continue to communicate in those given situations. I'm sure that, I'm not looking to compromise a Board member or the administration, but I don't want to be restricted without having the opportunity to continue and talk to those people that may very well reach out. The benefit of that opportunity that was this Sunday, sitting at that kitchen table with them, was that we were able to pull out the student handbook and review the handbook so that we could communicate with the family and the student on what the proper procedure is in handling given situations. Another nice thing about that opportunity was, we went on the laptop and went to SPS.org and was able to communicate to them how it is that we have a method and a practice where if you had any questions or concerns, you can select the tab, "Let's Talk." And so, I kind of, I have this sense that number eight would kind of help prohibit some of that. It wouldn't be, in my opinion, against the Board or the administration, and if so, we certainly have norms that can help address that as well. And so, I would be in favor in what you have presented on number seven and number eight by striking out the first part of each one of those.
I would have to go back and take a look at the board norms that we adopted a while back to see whether or not these things are actually covered. I don't have them in my memory, like some of you may. I think in a district our size, following the chain of command is very important to do so, otherwise, my concern is that it can become unwieldy out there with the right hand not knowing what the left one's doing. And when, I don't believe, based on what I'm reading here, that this, anything as written currently would prohibit you from sitting at the kitchen table and listening to, you know, what your neighbors or personal friends have to say. I mean, none of us live in a vacuum. We all have neighbors, we all have acquaintances and friends that may want to come to us with issues. I get that, and I, one of the most important things that I believe we can do as a school Board is to really listen to what people say. But then my response to that would be, I appreciate you sharing that information. We have people in the district that are designated to, for you to visit with, that are better equipped to really get into whatever your issue is and to answer your concerns than I might be as a Board member, because I don't have the same degree of knowledge or expertise that those working over in the Board building might have. So, in terms of private action, I don't think, to me, that doesn't mean you can't be friendly and you can't listen and you can't thank people for bringing it to you, and you can't keep, I mean, you'll keep it in the back of your head. I mean, it's there. But I think referring them on to those closest to the issue that really can solve it, because one of the things that I'm learning, being a newly-elected Board member and a former principal, is that we're not the fixers, and I was reminded of that. I mean, as a school principal, I felt like I needed to fix things, if I could. I don't think that's our role here. I think that the folks working in the offices here, in the central office in particular, or at the Board Building, or at the Board, pardon me, at the schoolhouse itself. I mean, the first thing I would be saying is, "Talk to your principal, go to 'Let's Talk,' whatever." I think the chain of command has to be followed, otherwise, it's just, it has the potential to be, well, I don't have a better word other than unwieldy, so I'll just leave it at that. But I do not believe that listening is an action. I think that's something that we do because we're human and because we need to be listening to what people have to say. And I will tell you, I have firmly believed for many years, in fact, it's on my personal email, the quote, "The best speaking you'll ever do is with your ears." You say a lot about who you are when you stop and really listen to what people have to say. Guiding them to the handbook or Board policy, I don't think there's anything wrong with that either. I don't think that's overstepping, you know, pointing out in the handbook where they might find solutions or referring them on over here. I don't see that as private action in and of itself. That, in the perfect world, would be public information and not have to be part of something that you're doing on the QT because you're not sure you should do it. To me, that's just being part of a good citizen. If we're truly saying, and again, I haven't looked at it, and Dr. Mohamed McConney, you may have more recently than me, but if truly these things are covered with the norms, perhaps there's a statement that goes in here that says the Board will follow the norms fastidiously and judiciously. Maybe that goes into the policy. I don't know. I mean, I had not anticipated the concerns being expressed, although I appreciate you expressing them and sharing them. So, that's what I'll, that's where I'll leave it.
Board Member Burton?
Thank you. Few of my thoughts on these two items. Number seven, I'll say I agree with the point that Dr. Mohamed McConney's making. I didn't see these things at first when I read through it, didn't think much of it, but now that I'm looking at them, I'm confused by the first sentence in number seven, "Follow the chain of command and direct others to do the same." This is speaking directly to Board members. Every item in this is Board policy, speaking of how Board members should act. And as far as I understand, with Board members, there's not a chain of command, there's not a chain, there's one link, and one link doesn't make a chain. The one link is, we have one employee, it's Dr. Lathan. There's no chain of command. We don't, we don't go to a principal and then start working up to, you know, whoever their director is. That doesn't exist for us. We're talking about Board members here. Like, it's one relationship. That is a relationship of seven of us collectively having one employee, which is Dr. Lathan. So, the point on the second part of that, of number seven, makes perfect sense. Personnel complaints and concerns will be directed to the superintendent. I have no issue with that, but I do find "Follow the chain of command" to be confusing in this context, so I don't see it making good policy if it's confusing. Number eight, "Take no private action that will compromise the Board or administration." That's very subjective. I also don't really care to have Board policy that speaks to a private action. I don't think Board policy can govern what we do privately, and I don't think it's my job to be responsible for what people's perceptions may be. For example, there may be people that think that if I go to church on Sunday, or a specific church, that that may compromise the Board. It's not my job to decide if other people are going to determine if that's compromising the Board or not because they disagree with something I do in my private life. I don't think it's Board policy's responsibility to say what we can and can't do in our private life. So, I would agree, strike the first sentence of seven, strike the first statement of eight. How we want to move forward with that, I'm happy to make a motion. If we don't want to do that, if we want to kick it until Ms. Kincaid can come back or and Mrs. Bruner can review it, I don't really care, but I'm prepared to vote no if this thing goes in front of us tonight as written.
I'm not in favor of putting in the norm and then saying that we're going to judiciously follow the norm, because then it's a policy. So, the way the chain of command works, and I think what the spirit of this is intended, is that we tell, let's say, person X comes and makes the complaint about something that's happening in the classroom, we say, "Well, have you talked to the teacher?" "Oh, if so, well then, talk to the principal or the counselor," or whichever person or assistant principal that you have a relationship with, and just move it up that way. Because I agree with you, based on the urgency or the nature of the issue, if I'm going to talk to somebody, it's always been Dr. Lathan, right? That's the person that we always go to. Again, why I find that statement confusing, I get the "direct others." Again, these are just, I don't like these as policies, Mrs. Bruner, these are good ideas, and this is, that's what I mean by board norms. This is typically what we do. And there's a big difference between typically and always, and I think that we are adults here and that this isn't a classroom where we're always going to do this. There's going to be an exception. I don't know what that exception is, but it's out there. And for that reason, putting it under board norm, which is, this is what we typically do, these are our typical procedures, is very different than making it a policy. Does that make sense? So, like, for example, respecting the confidentiality of information that is privileged, that is a policy. We don't talk about private information that is protected under the law. So, for me, this nuance, while last year or the year before didn't make much of a difference, but in my tenure, I have come to appreciate that there is a difference, and it is important to make that distinction. It matters to me.
Mr. Christ, are we voting on these Board policies separately, or is it supposed to be voted all at once?
Oh, we're going to vote for them separately, and I'd like to make a comment or two first. So, first of all, reading number seven more closely than I should have made this comment before, or at last meeting, is that number seven I see as two separate, two separate items. Follow the chain of command and direct others to do the same, number seven. Number eight should be, personnel complaints and concerns will be directed to the superintendent.
Say that again?
Make them two separate, separate them, because I don't think they're really related to one another. And then, if it's already in the norms, to follow the chain of command, and we know, you've stated it, Kelly, the chain of command, we have one person that we're responsible for, and that's the superintendent.
And I think it would make more sense if we were just more clear with that statement then. If the intent is to say that we should follow the chain of command, then we should just be clear about what the chain of command is in terms of a Board member, because I'm just unclear on if this is, because of the second part of this statement, it leads me to believe that they're saying we should direct others to do the same, I guess, as it says there, but it's telling us that we should follow the chain of command. So, I guess it's kind of merging two things together that makes it a little bit confusing. Right. And...
And then number eight, I agree with the first sentence, that it's, you'd have to define "no private action." It is, Dr. Mahan McConney pointed out, is too subjective, open to interpretation. And I don't have any issue striking that. And it is, you know, in contradiction to number 11, as you point out. But I think we do need to keep the respect, the confidentiality of information that is privileged under applicable law in there. So, with that being said, I think we'd have to make a motion to amend this.
Excuse me, would there be any further comments?
I'm sorry?
Would there be any further comments with relation to BBF?
I have something else. I, it's interesting to me that, I think it was Board Member Byrne, to separate the chain of command sentence from the other one with personnel complaints. I, I can see that's two separate thoughts and important thoughts at that. And I, I would be very comfortable leaving it with two sentences there, seven and eight, rather than just seven. The intent of the "no private action," I, I'd like to direct that to Dr. Lathan. What, first of all, where did we get the wording for these additions? Where did we get that?
As it relates to number...
Well, I was just, in general, the things that are highlighted in yellow.
Some of the highlights were recommendations that Board Member Mahan McConney shared on last week. And then it was a combination of a couple of other...
Some of the ones that I mentioned were the ones that I suggested, and those I got from the previous MSBA rendition. These ones are all what we had before.
Right. They were from the previous board voted on them before.
Are you asking about seven and eight, Ms. Brunner?
Yes, in particular, well, any of them for that matter, but number eight is what I have in mind. Because I, you know, I worry about any of us being compromised or putting the school district in some sort of compromising situation there in terms of "no private action." I guess maybe I'd like an example of what that might be, if it was broken.
May I?
As far as I'm concerned.
So, perhaps, I don't know if the word "private" is what's bothering board members, but I'd like to remind board members that we act as a board and not as individuals. So if we take no action, period, that will compromise the board or administration. I think that it includes any behaviors that we do that are contradictory to what the board is charged with and/or what the administration is trying to accomplish.
But that's already there in green under number five. Recognize that the board acts only as a formally convened body, that individual board members have no independent authority to speak or act on the board's behalf.
I, I agree. But the number eight is about, is about those members individually doing something compromising to the administrative board.
Well, what's that "something"? And what's "compromising"? Who makes that determination?
There are anything that is going to be contrary or contradictory to what the collective board has put forth.
That's circular. I don't understand that, I'm sorry. So, so you're going back to number five?
I'm not going back to number five. I was just bringing it up as a reminder, when it says "take no private action," that we act as individual, we don't act as individuals, we act as a collective board. It was just a reminder as we look at number eight.
How is it different than number five? How's it different?
One is a policy against doing things that will compromise. One is just saying that we maintain the freedom to speak freely to one another.
Oh, I meant number five in the green, I apologize, in the MSBA rendition. The seven that the MSBA puts forth really sort of encompasses most of what we've tried to add in and piecemeal. I'd previously mentioned, I think they do a really good job.
I'll add in that five in green makes a lot more sense as policy.
Sorry, yes, I meant five in green.
Five in green makes a lot more sense as pol, as policy than the, the language in number eight. It's just, it's, it's more clear.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to strike the first clause in statement eight and strike the first sentence and statements seven that are in yellow.
I'll second.
We have a, we have a motion to strike the first sentence of number seven.
Number eight. Number seven, yes, the entire first sentence in number seven.
In the yellow.
And take the first, am I using the right word, clause?
First part.
English is my second language. Is that the right term?
Of number eight.
Of number eight.
So, number seven would read that, it would start with personnel complaints and concerns will be directed to the superintendent. Number eight would read, "Respect the confidentiality of information that is privileged under applicable law." That's the motion?
I have...
Okay, Kelly seconded, yes, that motion.
Okay, I'm, so we simply would be eliminating the first sentence of seven and saying nothing about, nothing about following the chain of command? That's troublesome to me, whether we split it up or have it in the same. I think it's clear if it's split. And then "no private action," I'm not going to disagree that it's very similar to number five in the green. But number five in green doesn't say anything about confidentiality or privilege under applicable law.
And we would keep that.
So we would keep that part of it?
Yes.
It was to our respect the confidentiality, that would be the beginning of number eight.
Okay, we just eliminate the "no private action"?
Yes.
Correct.
That's the recommendation.
That's the motion, right.
Do you want to make a motion on number seven? Stack the motions.
Well...
You have to vote.
Right, she can stack it, and then we go backwards and vote, right? Let me get my cheat sheet out.
Amend the motion.
Amend the motion, excuse me.
Right.
Well, is it appropriate to amend it at this time? I'm asking, I don't know.
You can, and then we vote backwards? I mean...
Okay, I would amend the motion to separate the two sentences in number seven in yellow, but leave them intact, but make them two separate sentences, because that, to me, is more clear, clearer.
Second.
Two separated enumerated items.
Seven and eight, they become seven and eight.
And then nine would be, "Respect the confidentiality of information that is privileged under applicable law."
Yes.
Right.
Motion has been first, been, been made and seconded.
So then there'd be, there'll be 12 then?
Right.
Okay. So you've amended the motion. So first we vote on the amendment, and then we vote on the motion.
Right. We first vote on the amendment. Okay. So...
Unless there's any more.
Time for a call for a vote? Okay, right. Okay, for the amendment, let's do a roll call.
No.
Yes.
I'm sorry, you said...
I'm getting it, I'm getting it.
No.
Okay, no.
Yes. No.
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 Yes.
Yes.
How does that work?
The amendment fails, it's a tie.
This is a tie.
Okay.
Now the original motion.
Okay, the original motion is to separate out number seven.
No, it was to strike the first sentence.
To strike the first sentence, I'm sorry, number seven. Just say, number seven starts with personnel complaints and concerns rejected to the superintendent, and then number, number eight would be, "Respect the confidentiality of information that is privileged under applicable law."
Correct.
Okay, roll call. Kelly?
Yes.
No. Yes.
Yes.
No.
I'm a no.
So now we have to vote on the policy as it stands?
You can go with the...
Well, we do. So now we have to vote on the policy as it's presented?
As presented.
Right, as presented.
I would like to make a motion before we vote on that. I would like to make a motion to strike the entire thing and just go with the green MSBA rendition. Go back to what MSBA, which was in green, as was originally presented to the Board of Education.
I would second that motion.
Discussion?
Okay, second, seconded by Board Member Makovsky, discussion. What do you think?
While the MSBA recommendations are very nicely written, I do think a certain amount of redundancy with regards to this policy is important and necessary as it comes to ethics. I don't think it's a problem to have a little bit of redundancy because it is such important to this board and to the function of this board. So I would not like to see these, because these are more specific to us and I would not like to see them to be taken out completely.
Any other?
I, I don't find that necessary. I do not believe that any member of this board has behaved unethically. So I don't feel that...
I disagree.
Any other discussion? Or Mr. Makovsky?
Well, we had this, we had the items in green at the study session, and then it was recommended that we add to it because it wasn't thorough enough or clear, is what I remember. Is that correct? No?
No, there were, these were already a part of, there were some additional ones that were already a part, and at the top of the MSBA, when they had stated in the previous document that this was based on the update to the MS, the IMSIP, that boards can have their own language included in this, in this document also. And ours was included from the previous document.
It was not included, it was struck through.
It was, but it was there.
Struck through.
With a note at the top that we may want to not strike it through.
That we could change it.
If I remember the discussion correctly from the last meeting, and please feel free to correct me if I, if I'm not right with it. We talked about awkward wording and the need to kind of clean it up so it was clear and concise, and does anybody else remember it that way?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, if that was a valid point, and I thought it was a couple of weeks ago, do we do that? If we just take off everything now that's in yellow and just go with the original green? I'm not sure, I mean, have we done that?
That's how it originally came to us, was just the green. But it's a cookie cutter green, cookie cutter green. And as I said, I went and looked at the board ethics policies of all our surrounding districts, and I was surprised to find that everybody's was the same except for ours. So there is some wisdom to that, I suppose. I just think we have to get, hopefully get somewhere where we can all agree.
I, I think the, the concern is that the board, the board does not seem to agree on whether or not this particular board or other boards have had actions that are ethically questionable. And because of that, I think that more language is probably better than, than less language or some clarity, rather than just striking out information. Because I do believe that this board has had actions, has, that have been, if not unethical, on the borderline of unethical.
I would agree with Board Member Tate that there have been people that have, had been borderline unethical practices.
But, okay, any other comments?
I'm not sure this policy would prevent that, but...
So we have a motion...
This policy wouldn't permit what?
I retract my statement.
So we have a motion and a second to just, just go with what's in green. It sounds to me like we were fairly close in our prior motions and revisions. Dr. Mahan McConney, is there a way where we can separate seven but also remove the first statement in eight and come to a consensus?
Could you spell it out?
I'm saying, if we, as suggested earlier, if we separate number seven into two enumerated items separately, and then on eight, we struck out "take no private action that will compromise the board or administration," could we motion for that version and take a vote that may pass? As I was listening to everyone, it sounds like that may be the case, that may be... I find that the "follow the chain of command" to board members is confusing, but I guess I can live with it. I'm a little more interested in, in getting the "take no private action" part out of there. So, do you have...
Would you like to make the motion?
Well, we already have a motion on the table, so...
Can we not withdraw the original motion?
Can you rescind it?
I, I, for the time being, I will rescind the motion.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we separate seven into two separate enumerated items, the first sentence being seven, second sentence being eight, and all the following items adjusted accordingly. And then number eight, we remove the first statement that's, that says, "Take no private action that will compromise the board or administration and..."
And then that would make that number nine?
Then we get number nine, and then...
And we'll follow suit.
Ten, eleven, twelve.
Yep.
So that's the motion.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Mr. Byrne, Board Member Byrne, and a second by Board Member Brunner. But we had to, that's the amendment, we had to vote on the amendment first, on that.
No, she was...
Oh, she, you did, okay, you did.
I rescinded it, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Are we still having a conversation before a vote? Are we, are we done with discussion?
The discussion would be open.
Okay. I would just like to recommend that if we strike the first section of number eight, to "take no private action," that we revisit the norms and make sure that this particular statement is clarified and included in the norms. That's my recommendation, not a motion.
Okay.
Dr. Mahan McConney, before we proceed with a vote with this, is this something you can support?
We can proceed with a vote.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, let's vote.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. This passes six out. Okay. And we have to look at AC. And then we have to look at...
Before we move on, can we clean this up and get it to us so that we...
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
What are we doing?
And we're going to look at AC next, prohibition against illegal discrimination, harassment, and retaliation. Any concerns, any changes? We didn't receive any changes to it. So...
I, I have a, there's a very simple change in here, so there's not a lot to talk about.
Okay.
But what is changed refers... But what is changed refers... Is surrounding a list of things that we can't discriminate against, yet that list does not seem to be exhaustive. So I just don't... I personally don't see why we need to just add this one more thing when we're not being exhaustive anyways. Like, what's... Why are we digging this up now and looking at this? Where is this coming from? Why are we adding one more thing when it's not completely exhaustive?
It's a USDA policy and so that's a part of their language. It's been updated, so this is updated to align with the USDA language that's under the nutrition program policy.
So if that's the case, I guess my question is, like, we have to abide by law. Why does our... Why do our policies have to be redundant every time there's a different law? Why don't we just abide by law?
Because laws are harder to assess and to find, although they're linked on the policy. It makes it clear for those who are reading and spells out the specifics of the law as it applies to the policy.
And there are different laws, from what I understand, or wording for each entity of the government.
Funny you should bring this up. So we... So I had brought this concern to Mr. Kreis earlier and made the suggestion that this go back to the Missouri School Board Association, this and all what I suspect will be future policies, that they're going to try to tweak the words to make it so that it states that we will follow all federal laws and regulations because those continually change. And irrespective of our policy, we are legally liable if we break the law. So it doesn't matter what our policy says, we have to follow the law, so why don't we just say we're following the law? And from that request ensued a conversation with Missouri School Board Association attorney.
Right.
Do you want to pick it up from there?
No, if he wants...
Do you want me to? So we spoke with...
You want to go through it?
Yeah, we spoke with Mr. Powell and he indicated, as Dr. Thomas Tate has, that this is a USDA... Well, that it all started out with a Supreme Court... What was the name? Bostwick? Bostwick?
Post... No, Bostock.
Bostock, sorry, I thought Bostwick. Bostock.
Presidential Executive Order.
And then there was a presidential executive order and that this is coming down the pike with various federal departments, that the first one out of the gate is the USDA and that they are asking for this language to be in there. So what Mr. Powell indicated is that by law, if you don't change this, the word "sex" is still in there and you can argue that, of course, that includes gender identity and sexual orientation. However, since the wording is not in there, should you have a USDA inspection, they could find fault with that.
And they could find fault through that, through an audit.
During an audit.
Right. And they have audited other districts within the state of Missouri.
Well, there's one district right now getting audited by USDA. It's actually getting audited for another reason, but then the USDA tagged on and it could... It could start a chain of audits within the state. And I don't know of any school district ever to have monies not be given to them because they weren't in compliance with a federal policy, so that never happened. Can you imagine the federal government saying, "We're not going to let you have money for free and reduced lunch students because you didn't put these words in and you chose to say we're going to follow the law"? I can't imagine seeing that day. So our conversation further went on to, this only applies to USDA. We're not going to withhold lunches from anybody, we all know that. My concern and why I asked for this is what's coming next? Because if this is the USDA, there's the Department of Education and various title programs. How far is this going to go? And Mr. Powell indicated it's going to keep going and the language is going to be changed. And I said, "Well, where..." Okay, what did he tell me? He said that several states banded together and brought a lawsuit. Currently, it's in limbo, nothing's happening.
Yeah, right, there's no order, you know, that... They didn't... They filed, but no action been taken.
No action's been taken specifically against this particular USDA one, which I was not aware of, that with every department that rolls out from the federal government, there probably will be more lawsuits and it's just a mess. I don't think in this mess, we're going to find USDA coming and nitpicking our policies. I agree with you. I think that we're always going to follow the law and it would be easier just to say in all our policies, we're going to be in compliance with the law, with all federal regulations. That way, every two years or four years or six years or eight years, we're not going back constantly changing things. I'd rather us spend our time at the board talking about... Mr. Makowski, talking about what's inside the four walls.
So part of the responsibility of this board is to review and update policy on a regular basis and part of the reason why we do this, because it does need to be spelled out in our policy, what the law says. Sometimes the law can be difficult to interpret, which is why MSBA provides us with the language in these updated policies. So I think it is necessary to have the language spelled out in our policy. If you were to click on some of those laws and the other lawsuits that these changes are based on, they're quite dense. And so to say that we're going to follow the law means that we have to go back and read all of those legal documents. And instead, what we've done is we've put those requirements into our own policies so that it's easy to read and it is there spelled out so it is clear to all who follow the policy. It's harder to follow that law if you... Than it is to follow the policy because the policy has spelled it out.
And let me say this, the USDA is very strict and he mentioned that. They're very strict and we risk being audited. They go through their audit checklist and they're very strict with it. And what will happen then is we'll end up spending taxpayer dollars, you know, because we have limited money and resources and we'll be spending our taxpayer dollars for stuff that we can't win.
And the policies aren't just for the board, the policies are also for our constituents. And so it provides an easy access way for them to understand what the legal ramifications are in our policy, just like we have talked about this particular policy was referred to today in public comments. And so it's important that not just the board follow the rules or the law, but that our constituents also have access to these policies so that they know what we're following.
But it's not an exhaustive list. In that case, maybe we should go back to legal and make it exhaustive. We don't have religion in there and we know by law, we can't discriminate against people based on their religion.
But this is USDA wording?
It may be USDA, but this is our policy.
About following the lunch, whatever this piece is on lunch.
So I find it hard still to believe that we can't word it to say, "We are going to follow the USDA policy to the T" and have that spelled out.
So then when something... Someone comes and says you've broken the policy, then instead of referring to our policy, we have to go back to read the USDA law?
Because law is... It trumps our policy.
I agree, but the point is that we have put in the language from the law so that it makes it spelled out here in our policy. It's a convenience thing, it's a clarity thing. I think it's still necessary to keep the language in there. I don't know if we're voting on this or not today, but I guess I will limit the rest of my comments because I think I made my points.
And I hear your points. I just think if that's the case, you know, we want to be specific in our policy, but we're not doing that. I mean, like Dr. Mohammed Kani said, it doesn't say you can't discriminate based on religion. It doesn't say you can't discriminate based on physical handicap or like, there could be a million things we could put in there. So I don't really want to play that game of just thinking of every group we could possibly discriminate against and then trying to make that policy. Like, this is never ending. So I... I mean, my position's just to vote no. And what you said, Scott, worried about what the USDA could say. If they're worried about us just not having these words in our policy, then the way I envision that happening is they'd say, "Well, you need to change your policy," and they would send a nasty letter and then we would bring it up in the next meeting and we'd change our policy. I don't think we're at any risk of spending substantial amounts of taxpayer dollars to fight something just because they think those words need to be in this policy. Then that's something we can change like that in the future, right? If they call us on it. And until then, I'm ready to say, "No, let's not play that game."
I take the risk, though. I take the risk if it's audited.
I just don't see a risk, is what I'm saying.
I'd like to call for the vote.
Okay, vote's been called.
Are you voting for both policies or just this one? I just want to be clear.
Let's just do this, Warren.
Okay. So this is AC?
Yeah, the recommended that the board adopt policy AC as presented. Do you have a motion?
Repeated, I didn't hear what you said.
It's that the recommended action is that the board adopt policy AC as presented.
That is my motion. That is my motion.
Okay. Thank you, Board Member Dr. Thomas Tate. I have a second.
I will second it.
Okay, second. Thank you, Board Member Dr. Mohammed Kani. Okay, and let's vote.
Well, now the floor's open for discussion.
Okay, the floor is open for discussion, okay.
What's the deadline for adopting this policy?
I asked that question of Mr. Powell and lovely gentleman, very helpful, always learn from him. And he said, "Well, the USDA can come next week." So there is no... So that was his way of saying that it's whatever they... Whatever we feel, the date is.
So that says to me that that's fairly... That it's something that needs to be taken care of in a timely manner if he's saying they could come at any time. Okay.
Anybody can come at any time, is what he meant, i.e., you don't have to... It's up to you.
Okay. This question is to Dr. Lathan or her designee. What's the dollar amount of loss? Should we be out of compliance and it gets taken to that level? What do we lose in terms of money?
We received about seven, around seven, seven and a half million dollars in Title One funds as a result of our free and reduced lunch percentages. And that includes staff, so those incurred, that cost or that monies that we receive are monies for positions at schools, Title One schools.
Okay. So it's not only milk and food, but it's staff positions as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
This is... This isn't Title One, this is just USDA, is it?
USDA and the Title One percentage is what drives the monies that we receive for title programs and that is all generated based on their guidelines.
Based on the discussion that I'm hearing, it seems that this wording only applies to the food service USDA regulations, correct? It has not bled over into any other policy, it's not any of that?
That is correct.
Okay. It's an emotionally charged topic. I mean, it is. And there's no question of that and I've heard from stakeholders on both sides of that conversation. However, I will say that I have yet to talk to anyone that believes you compromise milk and food and staff positions based on this, even regardless of what their feelings about the wording might be, that it is not appropriate to potentially compromise those things that we need and that our families depend upon. And yes, maybe we could go back and change it immediately, but why put ourselves in that position? The guidelines have been given to us, as I understand it, and we're not Congress here. We don't put these regulations in, but we've been given a directive and a recommendation of what our policy needs to say. I don't know how we fight that. We're a local school board. We follow the guidelines we've been given and I think the guidelines are pretty clear from what I can see. I just... I haven't talked to anybody nor do I believe that it would be appropriate to put any of our Title One funding, whether it's for milk or food or position, at risk over this. It is not worth it to me.
Additionally, at the bottom of this policy, there is a list of definitions, including the definition for discrimination, which does include religion, but the language that is above that was... Is the language that is in question is just regarding the USDA piece under school nutrition programs.
I don't believe that we are risking any money whether we adopt or don't adopt this revised policy. I don't think, as I said before, that the federal government is going to cut our money off for our free and reduced lunch because I feel that that is a coercion. I... It's a way to manipulate us. I don't think they would do it. And so when I move forward, I'm putting that to the side. So as I move forward, we are a local school board and I think that that is where our strength is and Missouri is a local school board state. That is how we are set up and that is how we function. And I push back against this idea that our policies have to reflect every little thing as we are told. I mean, I resent that we have to let other people make the decisions for the seven of us. I think we should be in charge of that.
We're not letting others make the decision.
Hold on, I'm not done speaking. So I... Again, I don't think that we are risking the money and I don't think that by stating that we will follow the law. And you are correct, this isn't emotionally charged now because we're dealing with the school nutrition program, right? This is putting a poster up saying, "Everybody can eat here." But at some point, it could be. And then we have the state law, we could potentially have a federal law and a state law and all these things can get all confusing. At the end of the day, it boils down to, we were elected to be in these seats to make the decision for our little school board. I say little in the big scheme of the country. We're not little, I know that. I'm a huge advocate and proponent of our strength in public education in the state of Missouri comes from locally elected school boards having local control, doing what they deem is best. And so because I don't believe that the money is at risk, I won't support this minor revision as it sits, as it is presented to us. Sorry.
Are you finished?
I am finished now.
So I think that we are not giving up our authority to the federal government, whether we spell it out or whether we refer to the keeping of the law, to the T, to the letter, whatever it is. It's the same thing, one just spells it out, one says refer back to the law. We're not giving up any authority in changing the language to reflect the law. Either way, we're following the law. So I just feel that it is necessary to spell out the law, the parts that are in question in the document. The piece that is in question apparently is including of gender and sexual orientation and whether or not it's here or somewhere else, it is moving forward as legal was saying and at some place in our policies, in order to follow the law, that will be a part of our non-discrimination policies in the future because it will be legal action that we have to follow within our policies. That's my point.
But the word "sex" is still going to be there, right? Am I understanding it right? If this motion fails, it's going to still be there, that it's sex. And we all know that sex includes gender identity and sexual orientation as defined currently by the federal government.
We don't all know that. I don't think we all know that. I think that's part of why it's included in here because everyone who reads our policy does not clear that. And so it's, again, spelling it out to make it clear to those who read the policy, not just board members.
I'm just clarifying what is coming before us for a board vote.
Right.
I'm clarifying the print.
Okay, you're asking the question.
I'm just clarifying the print.
Sex will remain.
Sex will remain. Everything that's in...
Red.
So let me just make this clear. Mr. Byrne, were you suggesting to... Were you making a motion? Did you...
No, I was simply...
Because there's also the red stuff that's striked out.
No, I was simply stating that I don't see a reason to support this and I do support what you said. I'm for local control and I don't think... I just don't like the idea of the federal government saying, "Here's your carrot of $7 million and you have to change the language in your policy." Like, we will follow the law. If we don't have to, then we won't, is my point of view.
We don't have to, but it makes for clarity for us and for those who read our policy that is... It makes it more clear. And so because of that is why we need to add it into the policy to make it clear.
And I just disagree because I think it's never ending. And I guess those are my final statements. And I would like to add, under no circumstances would I be okay with us discriminating against anybody for anything. We're going to feed the kids. I just... I agree with the other statements that you made, but I wanted to make that clear. And I'm ready to vote whenever.
I might add, if I could, please. I don't think this federal government's going to come and take $7 million from us. I just don't believe that. I think that would be a first in the nation for that to happen and I think there would certainly be quite a ruckus following that with regards to following the law and having just sex in there. just sex in there, is something that I would be an advocate for in removing the language including gender identity and sexual orientation. I think, Dr. Maryam Mohammed Kani, you kind of alluded that, once we start down this path, what is going to be next in spelling this out in other laws that we may be faced with and other policies? And so I would not be in favor of this with that language in this policy at this point.
May I add something?
Yes.
Okay. I think we all know that there are layers to government, and because a position might be that we follow the guidelines provided to us by attorneys interpreting these guidelines and using this language, I think it would be... It wouldn't be particularly honest to assume that anyone that doesn't follow that, that we don't support local control. Local control is important, but there are layers to our government, and we are part of that layer, and there are legal experts that have given us the wording, and I don't feel justified at this point to push back and argue with it when I don't have that kind of expertise. I would hope that nobody comes in and swoops in and takes $7 million. I mean, I can't even imagine that, but the potential is there. So I don't, I, we've had legal experts give us this wording, it keeps us in compliance with what the USDA is asking, and I don't think that an acceptance of that or an agreement of that indicates that, at least in my case, I'm against local control. I think there are layers to what we do.
Okay. Now, my understanding is that this language, no matter what, tell me if I'm wrong, it's going to be on the posters.
Yes.
Okay, it's going to be on the posters, why not put it in the policy? You know, and otherwise, I'm going to say it again, we run the risk of losing funds.
I don't know, do we make the posters, Dr. Lathan, or do we receive the posters?
No, no, we receive the posters.
We receive the posters, okay, that's what I thought, we don't make the posters, okay.
Again, there is a slight risk that we lose funds, we don't want to do that. We don't want to have to fight this and spend taxpayers' money for some wording that's on the posters. Are we losing some local control? I don't see how we're losing that much local control. And I think it's a no-win situation here, just because of the risk there, and we're going to have to spend taxpayers' money to fight it. I can't do that.
I call for a vote.
What are we voting on?
Policy A.C.
As stands, which is the motion that I put forward.
Right, exactly.
Did we have a second?
We did.
Thank you.
I second it, I believe.
Roll call then.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
So it fails, which means we have no policy? Or you have an existing policy?
Yeah, that's what I was clarifying earlier.
We have the existing policy.
Bring it back.
That's what I clarified before I voted. Okay.
Okay, the next one is policy EF, which is the same language that was changed in A.C.
So on this next policy, what is it?
Food Service Management, but it's the same language, because it ties to the food service.
Almost, EF, there is one, yeah, we just had the whole discussion about that language, but this one does something else that I've pointed out in other board policies, as we get these revisions back from whoever, whomever the attorney is. Changing the pronouns in this, where the former policy says his or her, and then we go out of our way to strike it and change it to their. I'm not going to play that game, I just really don't like the idea of some attorney somewhere, I assume in Jefferson City, doesn't have kids in this district, doesn't pay taxes in this district, going through our policies with our taxpayer dollars that they're being paid to find pronouns and change them in language that does nothing to better the education in this district. So just for that matter, it honestly, it makes me question everything else that they want to change in here, like, what are we doing? So for that matter, I'll be a no on this.
As a person who studies linguistics, the changing of the pronoun for their to refer to, he, him or her, she, she and him, has always been a part of our language, it has never been, it is not something that's new, it's not something that is related to gender identity, it has always been a part of our linguistic system. As a professional who studies linguistics.
Call for a vote.
What are we voting on?
I guess, yeah, do we have a motion, I guess?
I make a motion to adopt policy EF as presented to the board.
Second.
Second.
Yeah, second by Dr. Byrne. So, any further discussion? Not hearing anything? Okay, let's take a vote.
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so, motion fails. All right. Oh, now we're done with that, now we move on to the treasurer's report. Okay, Dr. Shaw, come to the podium.
Good evening, items for the treasurer's report are attached to board docs as usual. A couple things to mention, the approval of the budget and transfer amounts will be balanced as a lead of August being 25.83%, so we'll maintain that continuous unbalance around 26%. Business services staff is currently and will continue to prepare for the district audit that will begin next month. Westbrook and Company will be on-site for their field work October 16th and 17th, as well as...
October 30th and November 1st for the 2022-23 annual financial audit. That will be presented to the board for final approval at the December 19th, 2023 meeting. So treasurer's report continues to maintain stability. Any questions you have at this time, I will do my best to answer.
I don't think there's any questions. Okay, the recommended, thank you, Dr. Shaw, appreciate that. Recommended action is that the board approve the treasurer's report as presented, do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the treasurer's report as presented.
Thank you, Board Member Chakaski.
Second.
Thank you. All right, Board Member Byrne, okay, let's go ahead and vote. With that being said, we're going to request to take a bio break for 10 minutes, so we'll come back at 7:21. Or earlier.
Our universal screener, Galileo, so we will dive right in. Reminder, not much different than our purposes typically, tonight, we're going to share an update on the universal screener and give you a glimpse into district-level baseline data by grade and course. Again, no building-level data or standard-specific data out of this particular assessment. These are no stranger to you, obviously, from the title of the presentation, we live in success-ready students primarily, and that situates within Dr. Lathan and the executive leadership team's goal number one, specifically Objective 1.1 and SMART Goal 1.1.1, which is about increasing the percentage of students meeting proficiency. So that situates the work, here is the agenda or the roadmap for where we're headed today. We're obviously going to share some SPS numbers that you haven't seen in this venue yet. Reminder about our assessment windows, and then we'll talk a little bit about the predictability of the Galileo assessment, then we'll move into the data piece, and finally, we'll end with some things that are not new to you, since we've been here with you in August for the academic update, but what's happening with action moving forward relative to this baseline data. So we'll dig right on in to the assessment tonight. A reminder, I'll give you a second to read the quote. So obviously, this work lives in the vein of continuous improvement, and it's about us shifting our thinking from being reactive relative to the data to being proactive with outcome-driven processes, which is what you'll see tonight. So here is a recent update of SPS by the numbers, broken down by enrollment, demographic, and attendance. These are numbers as of posting this in board docs on Friday, so you can see the date there of September 22nd. So current enrollment across the district lives at the top, with a residential enrollment count below that. Again, those are our students that live within the boundary of SPS, and then our pre-K enrollment. We'll deep dive on the next slide into higher, or lower, higher-level demographics, but what you see here is our current FRL, as well as the percentage of students across the district that receive special education services and/or English language services. And finally, attendance percentages, not only by division, but also district-wide, all headed in that 2% increase there, so that we can see Dr. Lathan in that Gatorade bath. So here is the SPS demographic data current for who the students are when we talk about our enrollment. So again, trending much like we have in the past, with almost 70% of our students being white. Just a brief reminder about the assessment windows for Galileo, which again is our baseline screener, as well as our local assessment that occurs at the beginning, middle, and end of the year. Dates are listed, as well as the purpose, so we'll just draw out tonight that we are living in the space of baseline scores, and it's giving us just that beginning-level information around what we should do next for instruction. So before we dig into the next phase of data, we just wanted to talk for a second about who we assessed. So last year, we came to you, and you know that we were assessing all students in grades K-12, so as we came to the beginning of this year, two modifications to who we assess. Because DESI requires a kindergarten entry assessment that began last year, that has to be completed by our kindergarten staff in the first 30 days, we do not, we did not ask our kindergarten students to take Galileo this year. They will still assess with us at the MOI and at the end of the year, but this screener that DESI asks us to upload and do provides us with enough beginning data there that we did not feel it was necessary. That was based on feedback, as well as lots of conversations that we had with teachers, leaders, and departments within the district. And then 12th grade students, so we alluded to this a little bit at the conclusion of the year, 11th and 12th grades' standards are shared in ELA at that level. So students are assessed in 11th grade on those standards, and then in 12th grade, they take more course-specific benchmarks, so we did not ask our seniors to take the Galileo assessment this year, so two modifications. So let's take a minute and pause and just share with you, I know you've been wondering about the predictability of Galileo, so Galileo is a platform that does allow us to make predictions around how our students will perform. So we can upload state data into the system, it will run in correlation with Galileo assessment, and it will give us an R-value to tell us how closely those assessments are correlated. So you can, you know, without giving you all the data-driven dialogue here, I'm going to keep it pretty high-level, but when we ran that analysis with Galileo, what we found was that four students in grades three through eight, there was an extremely strong correlation between their performance in Galileo and their performance on the state assessment. So similar was true for the areas listed in ELA, as well as some areas listed in math, as we think about EOC. Moderate correlations in a couple areas in math, and then moderate to strong, and then moderate in a couple other areas. So what we see here is correlations moderate to strong across all grade levels, whether they were being assessed on the map or EOC. Okay, good evening, board, I will be sharing our beginning-of-the-year Galileo baseline data by grade level and content area. Okay, so here you'll notice that just over 39,000 required beginning-of-the-year Galileo benchmark assessments were administered. You'll also notice that close to 5,000 optional Galileo benchmark assessments were administered, that is, in courses that are not EOC-tested, so they were optional, and teachers chose to give them. And then just under 16,000 dyslexia screenings were administered, which, as you know, are required by DESI for first through third-grade students. These were also administered for students in fourth and fifth grade, if requested by a parent, or guardian, or a teacher. Okay, so what you see on this screen is the 2023-24 Galileo baseline data by grade level and content area for kindergarten through fifth grade. So I want to remind you that Galileo benchmarks are tests that determine what students may already know and what they may not yet know about the grade-level Missouri learning standards. So the assessment measures a wide sampling of the grade-level standards that students should learn during the school year. The information helps teachers adjust instruction to best meet students' needs, that's why we refer to it as baseline data. Okay, here you'll see baseline data by grade level and content area for sixth through 11th grade. Again, this tells us the percentage of students who scored where we would expect them to score at the beginning of the school year on that, standards for that grade level. Okay, so Dr. Holt mentioned earlier about the purpose of data, and that the main purpose of data is to drive instructional decisions and how they impact student outcomes. So in the rest, I guess in the next few slides, you will see an overview of how we're taking action and how we're utilizing that data to shift student outcomes. Okay, so this slide might look familiar to you, this is a reminder that the purpose of formative assessment is to guide rather than to judge learning. As a great comparison for formative assessment is practicing for a sport. So just like a coach utilizes how students are practicing and provides feedback to players, we use the beginning-of-the-year Galileo data to identify discrepancies, provide specific feedback to students that will drive next steps to eliminate those gaps in learning. So summative assessment informs overall achievement level. Again, you'll notice, much like the image on the screen, that the summative assessment is the big game. So how did each of the formative assessments along the way impact how we performed on the state assessment? With summative assessment, we focus on, was the assessment that we provided valid and reliable? Okay, so the term essential standards isn't new to you, in August, we shared the work that we're currently doing around essential standards, which are the minimum that a student must learn to reach grade level or higher goals. So this year, essential standards were selected by teachers district-wide and are focused on in professional learning communities. So when we analyze data, we're looking at how students are performing on those formative assessments specific to essential standards. Essential standards are often referred to as heart standards due to being vital to a student mastering grade-level standards. When these were selected by teachers, they selected the standards that were most, that attached to all the other standards, so they're the foundational standards. If students don't master these standards, then they're less likely to master all grade-level standards. Okay, this slide, again, should look familiar, this was shared in August, and provides details around the use of essential standards within DCAs, and how they are an integral part of our building school improvement plans, which you see on the right. So here you see specific action steps and measure that, measures that are included in each B-SIP. So here you'll see just a zoned-in picture of that B-SIP. So in professional learning teams, teachers are utilizing beginning-of-the-year baseline Galileo data to inform initial instruction toward mastery of essential standards. And now, Dr. Holt is going to share how we connect all of the work. So obviously, much of this is familiar to you, but I think it's important for you to recognize where we've been, how that aligns to the data we expected to get, and then where we're heading. So again, not a lot necessarily new on this slide, but this work is about learning, collaboration, and results. So we've taken huge strides in relationship to guaranteeing, a guaranteed viable curriculum, providing teachers the resources through curriculum guides, content matrices, and then systematically selecting and teaching instructional strategies that we know yield outcomes for students. We've then supported teachers and leaders with how to set up, maintain, and become a professional learning community that... a professional learning community that functions around the four guiding questions that you see, or you're about to see. And then those results are in different forms that we receive, right? Galileo baseline data being one of them. District Common Assessments, which is another layer we've implemented this year around those essential standards that Dr. Majors just reminded you about, as well as Common Formative Assessments that allow teachers to do additional assessing in between either the district data points or the local assessment data points that Galileo provides at the BOI, MOI, and EOI. So where are we now? We are in the process and actually have given our leaders the information and coaches the information they need to walk teachers through a beginning-of-year data protocol. So again, I'll just situate that the protocol lives around the essential questions asked in a PLT or PLC. And so we start with the standard. What is the standard language? How do students progress towards that standard? So if students haven't yet mastered that standard, what are the progressions that build to that? And if they have, what is the what's-next moment for them? We then unpack the Galileo data in PLTs, citing specifically the number of students who are meeting the standard currently, as well as that percentage. That gives the teacher a clear knowledge around, in my classroom, here's where I am in relationship to the essentials and mastery by student. Then we look at how that question was assessed, both in the Galileo platform and how the DCA language is written. So teachers can evaluate how it's assessed, what's being asked, and then how my instruction was applied. So they're going to do a ton of reflecting as that data comes back to them in their grade-level or content-area teams. Then they move to questions 3 and 4, which is specific to, what do I do if they don't know? And then what if they've already demonstrated mastery? And so you can see that those next steps live in our academic priorities relative to tier-one instruction. So we're asking teachers to look again. How was the lesson designed? And how did that impact the data that you got? And what might be your next steps based on what you did the first time? We also link here for them the reteach options. At the academic update in August, we let you know that we have developed reteach for all of our lessons in the system. So teachers now have access to go back here and say, it didn't work for these students and why? And then what am I going to do as a result of that information to ensure mastery for my students the next time? So I alluded to this a little bit, but this is how assessment data moves into action, right? So we've taken, our students have taken the assessment. We've done the analysis. The data is now in their hands. We've guided principals, district coaches, and leaders across that also support PLTs, gave them the knowledge relative to the protocol, and sent them back to campuses to work with their teachers. So now it's deployed across professional learning communities with coaches and principals in partnership to walk teams through, to look at the granular student-level data and what we're going to do next as a result of what we have. So the next layer that I think we really felt like was important to highlight is how are we communicating the information, right? So this data is baseline. It speaks to what we would expect our students to know at this point. And really, Galileo provides some rich reporting for principals and for teachers. And so the individual developmental report will highlight, as well as the detailed. And then we'll talk to you about some of the strategic work that we're doing for those that need higher levels of intervention. So the Individual Developmental Profile Report specifically outlines how the student performed on the standards that were assessed. So it's going to give what was assessed, the percent that the student got correct, and their performance level. Again, this is a formative assessment, so it's not meant to really talk to achievement level, but Galileo places it there for the parent and the teacher to recognize. So the Detailed Developmental Profile takes that a little bit further, and that is the report that we will be dialoguing with parents about at parent-teacher conferences. So the individual one will go home with families with information, and then the detailed will be what's shared as you come in for your conferences at the end of October. So just some key terms that live within that report are obviously going to be the percentage, which I think is pretty understandable to most, as well as the developmental score. We talked a lot about that last year. The percentile rank is also provided, how they compare, right, to other students in that same grade or who were assessed on the same subject. And then the Lexile Score, one that we're really asking teachers to communicate and drive home because we know how important literacy is. And so if we can provide parents and families with the tools that tell them, here's the reading level at the beginning of the year of where your child is, here's where you can go to the library and find books in that space, or when you're working with your student at home, make sure your text is in this range, is something that we know that partnership will help, not only academically, but for their future. Here is what that looks like. We're also happy to provide that in detail, obviously omitting any student identifying information, but letting you know what that looks like. So you can see those things I listed on the prior slide live within the report, as well as an explanation similar to what you have heard from Dr. Majors and I. So that's the report that's going home. And then the detailed report, you can see how that, once we stack, meaning once we have some middle-of-year data too, will start to show some comparison as well. Here's how they did at the beginning of the year. Here's how they did at the middle of the year. Right now, it just lives in the space of BOI.
Okay, so beginning-of-the-year Galileo data was also analyzed to determine which students need additional intervention support. So we didn't want to miss the opportunity to share. We look at the data, and we're making shifts in the classroom. Teachers are making shifts to instruction, but we're already, we're also providing district-wide support for students who scored below basic and that were identified as needing intervention. So you'll see on the left that Voyager is our intervention for students in grades K through 6th grade. You'll see detailed information about that tutoring that's offered after school. And then for high school, we offer strategic classes in grades 6th through 9th grade. And you'll see specifics to how many students are enrolled in those courses as well. Okay, so when we look forward and we think about what's next, we will return after middle-of-year. We will have, we'll be taking the middle-of-the-year Galileo benchmark in December. And so again, in the middle-of-the-year, we'll have comparative data, beginning-of-the-year and middle-of-the-year, and teachers will be able to measure progress from now until middle-of-the-year towards mastering those grade-level standards. Okay, thank you so much for your time, and we are happy to answer any questions that you have.
Well, thank you, Dr. Holt and Dr. Majors. I'm picking it on the tables. Are there any questions or comments?
If I may.
Yeah, Dr., or geez, Mr. Makoski. I'll call you doctor.
I don't want to be a doctor.
All right. Board Member Makoski.
This dyslexia screening, the assessments and that, do we pay for that, or does DESI provide us funds for each examination or assessment that we do? I'm just curious.
So the DESI screeners are included in our Galileo package. They come with it. So they're embedded within Galileo.
And, Dr. Nicole, I think at one time, was it two years ago that you started to use like Marzano's Strategies?
Really, like started at the last?
With the Galileo? I mean, was that last year? I'm just curious because I want to be able to monitor the strategies that you're using, like the technique, in order to see how successful it is as it moves along.
Yep, so we started that pretty systematically. It would have been at our May of '22.
That's what I thought.
And so sites have selected, have some of their own selected indicators and some that the district has required in both years.
And in that practice, all of the educators, as they're going through and they're assessing their students and stuff like that, is it instilled and across the board for all of the educators to use Marzano's?
It is an expectation that teachers are utilizing Marzano instructional strategies.
Thank you so much.
Any other discussion, questions?
Yeah, I have two, just two questions. I'm curious about Slide 12. So you talked about this R-value, which is helpful. I'm glad you included that as we're learning more about Galileo now that we've got the MAP test under our belt and we're learning how helpful it is as a predictor. This is helpful. I'm curious, so obviously, if this R-value is around .8, that shows a strong relationship, that R-value doesn't tell you, I guess, which, because you're comparing MAP versus Galileo, right, to create this R-value? And this just indicates a relationship of how predictive it is, but it doesn't. Is there information that tells you if they do better or worse on one or the other? Like if they more often perform better on Galileo than they do on the MAP? Because they're not one-to-one predictable, so there is some difference. So I presume it's, it's got to be either better or worse in some cases. Do we know? And you may not have the answer for that. I'm just really, I'm just curious if one of these tests is harder than the other, I guess?
So they're, they're both assessed on the standard, right? So it would just be the, what could cause error would be the question type. And we can control for some of that in Galileo, but we have no idea of knowing what question type the MAP will put out, right? And so the correlate may not be as tight because of the type of question. That's one variant that it could.
Well, I guess if you were looking at 100 different students who took both the Galileo and the MAP.
Which this is run only on those that we had that in for both.
Yes. But say you took a sample of 100. Would, would, would there be some sort of, would there be information that would show that generally speaking, they did better on one versus the other?
I mean, I'd have to, you can.
Yeah, so we have standard-specific data for the Galileo assessment.
As well as MAP.
Yep, so teachers can dive in and see exactly how the students answered the question per standard. So we will have similar data for MAP, the MAP assessment. So in totality, like with an R-value, no. But it, but we can look as a district, which we will be. The Curriculum Assessment Intervention Team will be looking at each standard, how students performed on MAP versus how they performed on the exact same standard on Galileo. So we will be analyzing that data. It won't look like this, but we will have the data.
So how do we get this R-value? Did Galileo present us with that? Or did we do some statistics work on our own?
Galileo did some, and we did some. And Bruce may be able to offer more insight if we want to go that specifically relative to how we established our value.
Yeah, I think you're exactly right, that it's the paired scores. And that was run for the entire district. So kind of to your point of can we look at who scored better on which one? I think it's kind of what you're getting at there.
On the whole, I would just think if you could create that R-value, you're looking at all the data for, for Galileo and all the data for MAP, and you're coming up with an R-value that says they're correlated to this strength. Then I would think you would have the ability to look at that and say, on the whole, where the differences lied, they were stronger on Galileo, or they were stronger on MAP. And that would tell us more information about, I guess, how closely aligned those two were.
Yeah, and just from a statistical standpoint, and I am not a statistical person, I have someone for that. The great thing is that we are looking at the overall and the fact that there's a high correlative value of .8 means that they are a good predictor. It's obviously causation versus correlation here. But it does, you're exactly right. We would have the ability to go in and dig in deeper. This data doesn't allow us to do that, but we, we do have the ability to start analyzing deeper into that data of where would be those differences.
So if that doesn't cause some sort of painstaking hours on someone to crunch the numbers, I'd just be interested to know comparatively the Galileo versus the MAP.
But wouldn't that be based on summative scores, not formative scores? So this data is formative. It's only telling us how they are at the beginning of the semester, what they should know at that point in time.
Correct.
And so you're comparing it to, it's a predictive value for R, not a, not just a correlational value for R. So it's predicting that there's a long-term relationship to where they are now, to where they're going to be at the end of the year when they take those MAP scores. Is that correct?
We took, we took EOI Galileo and EOI MAP to get this correlate, right? But it, but, but to look at this year's BOI, right? No, we, because they haven't taken that assessment yet, right? But when we ran it, EOI to EOI, this is how strongly correlated those assessment scores were.
This is, so that means we have MAP results in?
We have preliminary MAP data. It is not official or released at this point.
Okay.
November.
16 and 17 slides. Have you looked at these BOI compared to last year's BOI?
Yes, we have reviewed cohort data.
Grade, like second grade last year versus third grade this year to see how that's changing? Is that something we can get information on?
I mean, the synopsis there is overall, kids are coming in the same place that they came in in a prior year. There's not a lot of fluctuation. And what I would say to that is, what is the intended purpose of this assessment? Right? The intended purpose is not to, not to compare cohorts. It's to see when those kids, specific kids, came in, what did they know of the grade-level content, right? Yes, we ran all of that.
Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, so I had my questions, now I have more.
Oh, no.
I had my questions, now I have more. So you guys have the MAP? I assumed that you were backtracking with the previous year's MAP, with last year's BOI, to try to correlate it. You actually have the maps that the kids just took in spring?
We have them mapped out, I assume, in a file state that is readable for internal purposes, which is what we look at. We can't share that information until it's officially released by the state.
But you can see how the students did, and you can place them in.
And we can, we can utilize that to inform instruction in classrooms at the start of a year.
So this is the thing that was released last year in March?
Yes, November is what they're saying.
November is what they're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
It was closer?
Fingers crossed.
I don't know if it happens. Okay, so I have just a bunch of quick questions. On the slide that had the enrollment, you don't have to go to it. So we have 23,000 students living in the boundary, but 25,000, little upward of that total. So is that the mocap?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just, okay.
We're right over 900 enrollments in mocap.
Okay, yeah, so I was trying to figure that out, okay. And then 23,000, that's based on that magical September day, September 22nd. So is that, that's lower than last year, or is it not?
So September magic date is tomorrow.
Oh, okay, that's, it's tomorrow, so you'll let me know later.
This is what we pulled as of Friday, right? So it will be official September count as of tomorrow.
You're not expected to know this, but would you happen to know what last year's numbers were?
I do not have the actual September count date for last year in my head. I wish I did.
I want to say it was a little over 23,000 last year, wasn't it? 23, maybe just a couple hundred lower, okay. Okay, I'll circle back on that one. So I didn't know this. All students in 1st through 3rd grade are screened for dyslexia. Did I hear that right?
Yes, by law.
Okay. On Slide 20.
As of two years ago, last year, two years.
Two years.
Two years ago.
Okay. That's what I was going to say. I don't remember my kids being screened. Okay, so DCA on Slide 26. Remind me again what that is.
District, District Common Assessment?
Okay, so I thought that, that's what Galileo was. That's our, what's our common assessment?
Galileo is our universal screener.
Right.
Local assessment provided three times a year. District Common Assessments are those assessments that our teachers wrote based on the essential standards. So we will do district measures quarterly.
But everybody in the district uses the District Common Assessment?
Correct.
So there's one for English, one for math, grade level. Okay, so we have three. We have DCA, then Galileo, and then MAP. So there's three sets of testing that.
So state assessment, MAP and EOC. Galileo as our universal screener. And then anything we provide inside the district, which would be common formative assessments for the district ones.
Common formative, I thought that was the Galileo that they created within Galileo.
They can create, but it doesn't roll up to one of the three times of year that we assess. So those three unique times across the year.
But they're using the Galileo platform.
But teachers can create a common formative assessment in Galileo at any time with their grade-level or department peers.
But DCA is not Galileo. It's a completely different set of testing.
Correct.
So sometimes the DCA is housed in Galileo.
Oh, okay, but sometimes it's not.
Correct, like elementary is paper pencil for the most part.
Oh, good, okay, got it. Thank you. What are we doing for the writing component in eighth grade? How does Galileo test for that? Does MAP test for that?
But it's, I mean, it's digital, right? So it would be on the platform. They would.
Are they writing, like at a MAP test? Do they like write paragraphs type?
I'd have to pull last year's specs to know exactly what they did. But it historically, that has been a part of the MAP assessment.
There are open response items, yes.
So does Galileo have open response or is it all multiple choice?
He, I don't know the answer to that. It's all multiple choice.
Oh, so how do we bridge that?
By D C As?
D C As.
Okay, got it, okay, D C As.
Or they can create, well, they can't create it in Galileo. They'd have to do a common formative assessment that wasn't utilizing the Galileo tool, similar to how we've done with district common assessments, where we may have one that is a writing element so that we can measure that particular standard.
So the English teachers are giving like a writing test to prepare for, okay. I have a couple of questions on slide 30 and a couple on 34. Okay, so I want to understand this. You said that the individual development profiles are available in the student parent center. So that's that first one that shows, I think it's great that they get their Lexile level. Did, did we do that before with iReady or is this a new thing?
Lexile was also available in iReady.
So parents are used to getting this information.
Familiar.
That language is familiar, okay. So you said that goes home and that the detailed one is shared with a parent teacher conference. Okay, so the one that goes home, so it's mailed home or it's, how does it go home?
Correct.
It is mailed home and K5, K8?
It, we, we are asking that they are sent home at all grade levels.
Oh, they are? Oh, so K12 they're sent home, mailed home. Okay, and then the detailed one, maybe I misunderstood this. You said it goes from beginning to middle and it builds on it or no?
It will, right? It will as they take another assessment. So you can see on the screen, this is the difference between what you see visually from just the sample.
Right.
So it's just gonna give you that baseline data, data of percentage, their developmental score, percentile rank. And then this is gonna give you the actual standard language as well as the, the scaling score there. And then how the completion piece, the percentage piece.
So how they're progressing.
It breaks it down even further.
Breaks it down.
For the dialogue at parent teacher conferences. Or if a parent, if a teacher wanted to call home and talk specifically about a student.
Because, so they're getting down to the test level because most parent teacher conferences are happening in October, like, like early on in the year.
Yeah.
So it's not, so they're formative, so there are the mini formative assessments that are being taken, I assume.
This report is on B O Y data. So they're gonna say, when your student came in, here's what we knew about them based on the Galileo assessment. But because we have other things happening, they're gonna review the rest of the grade card and say, and here is what we, here's the progress that they've made based, it could be based on a D C A, could be based on other common formative assessments that they've provided, other unit assessments built into the curriculum.
So the one that goes home is just the general, here's where your student is. And the one that they discuss is line by line, what data they used to get to that percentage?
Yes, but it's only about Galileo. That, that report's only about Galileo.
Both of those? Okay, got it. And then for the parents that don't attend, will this detailed or aren't aware or aren't engaged or busy or something happens, they can't make it? Will this get mailed or no? This can only be, will this be accessible on the pro, on the, what do you call it? Center, the?
And they can log, a student could log in at any point and see that report as well. But we had, we haven't talked further about post-parent teacher conferences and how we might approach getting people that didn't attend the data.
Because not all the parents attend. I wish they did, but it's not possible.
I think it depends on the level, right? Depends on the division. Most of our elementary parents do, but after that, it's not as easy.
And then slide 34. Okay, so on the Voyager side. Okay, so I'm remembering from the last presentation. So Club Encore, that's the after-school tutoring program.
Which is now Voyager.
It's now called Voyager. And I remember you telling us that literacy takes precedence over math.
Correct.
And then this, if they come up to snuff, then second semester they do math.
Yep.
This is free, right?
Yes.
I was under the impression it was the students that stayed for after-school care that got this. But I'm now learning that you're inviting students, so any student.
Yeah, based on, it's based on their data.
Okay, so, but then this parent has to provide transportation.
Correct.
But it's, so if a student wasn't invited, but they're in the after-school care program, do they not get it then?
So the program?
I'm trying to, I'm getting them confused, I'm sorry.
The program is, like you, there's a rank, a system of how we determine who is placed in the program. If you are a student that accesses after-school care, you simply go to Voyager and then you go to care, right? So it's onsite at the school.
They have access to that.
Correct.
Okay.
So if, if I'm already going to Boys and Girls Club and it's onsite, then I go to Voyager first and then my tutor, my tutor takes me to after-school care after that.
So everybody goes to Voyager?
It's, it's limited to the students that qualify.
Oh, so if you're an after-school program, but you don't qualify, you don't go to Voyager? You just go to the after-school program?
It is an invitation.
Got it. It's by invitation. And we also learned that by invitation, I didn't know it was by invitation, I'm just now learning this. It says that typically, previously it was in grades two through six, but that you were dropping it to first grade for some schools, for the bottom 5% schools, Holland, Westport and McGregor. So I guess what I'm struggling is knowing that your window to close that gap is kindergarten, first, second grade, right? Is the reason we're not extending it to all first graders who are behind? Because of location, funding?
So it's mainly because of tutors. We're struggling to find tutors.
We don't have staff.
Yeah, so we have invited this many students, but we've recently had to reach out and kind of pause the program because we don't have enough tutors. And so we're partnering with Missouri State. Lydia Akers has attended. We're trying to recruit practicum students. We're recruiting students who are going into education. We have lots of things like that we're doing to recruit tutors, but because of lack of tutors. But ideally, this is a pilot for first grade. We would love to extend it district-wide if we have tutors and if we see success because we agree that is the best time to intervene.
If you think about the, how prescriptive in nature the teaching of the program is, we can access other, other individuals such as our graduate students or students in, you know, in early education careers because it's very tight in how that instruction is provided.
You mean this Voyager, so now Voyager's online, but it's with, I thought it was online, is it, is it digital?
No, it's, so there's a digital aspect. I know our launch students are using the digital access, but it is, it is, a teacher delivers the instruction.
It's pa- paper and pencil?
Yes. There's an, there's an adaptive component to Voyager, similar to the adaptive programs that we have. But it is face-to-face. Teacher provides the instruction.
Correct.
Teacher provides instruction, but is it still on the computer?
Just in an adaptive element for kids.
Tell me what adaptive.
So thinking like they may have a piece to it to show mastery towards what was taught. They might take a mini-assessment after the teacher has taught something for a Monday and a Wednesday or whatever it might be, much like we do in other places in our curriculum.
Okay, so let's say you're doing addition or subtraction. It's first grade, second grade. You're doing it on the computer or is it with paper and pencil?
We're doing it with paper and pencil.
Okay, so that's the Voyager curriculum. They look, the, the tutor looks, it tells them what to do, they follow it, and then they assess on the computer.
Correct.
Got it. That's Voyager.
Correct.
And I'm, I'm sorry to hear that we don't have the staffing. Okay, last question. On the right side of the screen, the sixth through ninth grade. I guess I misunderstood. I thought, well, I guess, maybe I misunderstood the last time, but that there is a class that the student, there's an extra class. I thought that's what I heard was introduced. And I thought everybody, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, well, what are the other students doing who aren't? How was the day structured to accommodate, to, the high, high school, I get. That's easy because high schoolers go to different classes. But the middle school?
They also, like it's, it's scheduled in a block.
So do they give up like an elective? I'm trying to underst-
It depends on that student's.
Because I think last year, everybody went to this extra class, right?
So with both of these programs, it's for qualifying students. So invitation might have been the wrong word. I think it's qualifying students. So students who qualify because of a criteria about where their data placed them that shows a need or a void in skill mastery in certain areas.
Then they go to that strategic class.
Or invited, they, they're qualified to attend after-school. They're qualified to be blocked for strategic math or strategic reading.
So last year, everybody went to an extra English class, but they were at different levels?
No.
No?
Last year it was exactly the same.
Middle school.
Where we were blocked for strategic in middle and high school.
Right.
For qualifying kids.
Okay, tell me again, blocked for strategic. So some students went to class A where they were, let's say, two grade levels behind. And some, I'm just theorizing, just example. And some students went to a class that was one grade level behind. But some kids went to an enrichment course?
I think what you're talking about is what we're doing with fifth core in middle school this year, which is where we have students who are getting a double block of something. One of those double blocks is strategic, right?
Okay.
And for students who maybe just need a reteach, right? Then they go to a different class. And then students who have mastery may go to enrichment. That's this year in middle school, fifth core only. Which is what we shared at the academic update.
So that's what we're doing this year?
That only connects to strategic because that, that is one of the options that students can access in the double block of literacy that we're doing in fifth core. But all other strategic-
When you say fifth core, what does that mean?
They're getting a double block of literacy.
Okay, so everybody in middle school is getting fifth, six, seven, eight or just certain?
Six.
Six, seven, eight, everybody's getting a double block of literacy.
Correct.
And the students that qualify, their double block is in strategic literacy.
Correct.
Did I just get that?
You got it.
Okay.
But all other strategic classes are functioning exactly as they did last year. For qualifying students.
So the strategic math, while these students are in strategic math, the other students are in regular math?
Their course schedule and scheduling already was.
So we're not adding an extra math class. We're only adding an extra literacy class.
Correct.
Sorry about that. It took a bit, but I got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions?
I, I have a few, sorry. First of all, the reports vary thorough and I appreciate that. I mean, it always is and you go into a lot of detail and you help all of us understand what I think is pretty complicated material and you break it down to where even I get it, okay? So on the average, how much time is an elementary student spending to take the Galileo testing in the fall? How much time does that take for an elementary teacher to pull that off?
At the beginning of the year.
Yep, that's what I'm thinking. I assume it's going to be similar each, for each time.
It varies by grade level. I know it takes a little bit longer in high school because it's a longer assessment, more in-depth questions. But I, they can take it in definitely under 45 minutes. I mean, it's typically about 30 minutes, so 30 for math, 30 for reading. So when you think about the whole, and the, the, the assessment is given to the whole class. It's not an individual assessment. So 30 minutes for, 30 to 45 minutes of reading, 30 to 45 minutes of math.
Okay, and I assume those get broken up probably into different days, just so kids don't get, and teachers don't become overwhelmed.
Teachers have discretion and autonomy to organize that, right? As long as they're within that window that we outline, right? So as long as you're within the window and have access to-
You can chunk it as you need to.
Correct.
Okay, so in elementary, depending on grade level, we're looking at probably a couple of hours?
At most, yes.
And at middle comparable to that?
Yes.
And then high school a little longer because the test tends to be a bit more comprehensive? Okay. I have said at this table and I stand by it, that what gets monitored gets done. I mean, that's just the way it is, especially in education. So, you know, I, I truly appreciate all the monitoring that's happening and all the, of the emphasis and work that's being done to provide this kind of data collection. I just want to make sure that, and I think you, everybody in here does too, you all as well. I won't put words in your mouth, but I know you would feel this way or I think you would. We have to keep the balance, I mean, we have to continue to provide time to teach. And, you know, we have the common formative assessments and we've got Galileo and, you know, I mean, it's, it's easy to just feel like if I'm the teacher, I've got the weight of the world on my shoulders to get all this done and then when am I going to get the teaching that gives me the results that we need to see? So I guess all of that is to say, let's just keep in mind as a district, to keep that balance there, you know, we've got to take care of staff. We're in a teacher shortage, quite frankly. And so, you know, we, we have to find the balance in there. I also know from experience that there's a lot of stress that goes on children on these testing days. And, and that's no small thing. I mean, because the teachers are under stress, the kids get under stress, the building. I mean, I can remember literally having sighs of relief when achievement testing was over and we could say we're done. So, but in our cycle that we're doing now, and I'm not disagreeing with it, it's just, it's continuous. It's, we just finished this one and then we're going on to the next one. So let's just, I just hope we keep in mind that we, we have to provide the time in there to actually teach, to get the results. And I know we're feeling tremendous pressure and understandably so to catch up with what's been lost, for whatever reasons it was lost. So you combine all that and I just think we've got to take care of everybody in this. I don't think I had anything else there. And I, I do believe that what gets monitored gets done. I get it. I get it. But the kind of data that you're giving us here, it's under everybody's leadership. I, I, I do appreciate it. And by the way, I'm the only one at this table that's ever worked for Dr. Lathan and I can tell you she's a taskmaster, so I get it. I get it. And that's a good thing. It's exactly what needs to happen.
I have a couple of questions. What happens to qualifying students who cannot attend after-school? Do they not get intervention?
They don't get access to the intervention after-school, right?
And on slide number 27, question three and four, what will we do if students don't know it? And it says in the third column, review strategies you will use, use in tier one and evaluate effectiveness. Are these strategies, the Marzano strategies?
They can be, right? And are in some cases. It's also the review back to the curriculum, whatever it may be. Here it happens to be literacy, to see what was utilized in the first teach and then consider adjusting based on the data. So it may be that as they walk through this, some students scored at B O Y in one way, but a teacher says, I've already actually re-taught for that standard since we gave Galileo and I utilized this strategy and here's the data that that yielded, right? So it might be that a teacher brings a different strategy. But yes, the focus is pushing them toward instructional strategies that we know yield high results.
So for those tier one strategies, interventions at tier one level, do we utilize a child study team or do we use the professional learning teams for discussing student strategies? Or is it just the teacher?
So it's the teacher teams. So whether that be a content team at a middle or high school or it would be a grade level team. But included in those teams are sometimes special education teachers, sometimes EL specialists, sometimes, most of the time, district coaches, right? So it's, it's often beyond just the grade level teachers, but the point of intervention is at the grade level teacher and then they can resource themselves as needed beyond that.
And then for this last column, next steps, reteach and intervention or extension, is that like the two, tier two intervention? And is the, I think I've asked this question before, but I don't remember. The small group intervention is done by a pair or reading specialist or someone else?
No.
Is the classroom teacher still at, at, that's at tier one? But at tier two, there's, it's still just the classroom teacher?
It is. We write it in that way. But that doesn't mean that those students don't also have access to other tier two supports, title services, whatever it might be. The classroom teacher's not necessarily documenting that here though, right? Because we have other documenting and record-keeping places for title supports, et cetera.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Can I ask one other one? What, what did you mean when you said title services?
So again, qualifying students that, again, by data, might get on our title campuses, access to an interventionist or a coach to support their acquisition of skills.
But that would happen during the school day?
Correct.
Okay.
In either a push-in or pull-out model depending on the campus.
So for the students that can't participate in the after-school Voyager program because they don't have a ride or for whatever reason, some of those students, if they receive title services, qualify for in-school intervention?
Would receive it during the school day.
This is a really tough question for you to answer. This is a really tough question for you to answer. Would you say that that covers most of the students who are behind? Or like, how many are in that gap that we gotta...
I would not say that that covers most of the students that are behind.
So just a small portion?
Simply because, simply because of manpower, of access to dollars and how many people that can buy at a campus, a title campus, right?
So the title services go to the campus, not to the student?
They go to both, right? And the, it could be a program resource that's provided that everybody on the campus accesses, or it could be people power, meaning I pay for an interventionist who is qualified, has higher education, and can provide a higher level of intervention than the classroom teacher.
Which could potentially be at a non-title school?
Only at a title school. Because the qualifying dollars go to that campus.
So that's what I meant. So it is for the school. It does follow the school, not necessarily the students.
The money does, yes.
The money does. So you could have a low-income student at a non-title school?
Correct, yes, we do.
Who if they don't have access to Voyager after-school...
May not also have access to a person or program that is provided to title campuses. That's correct.
So the intervention that we provide right now are only at title schools?
And what the classroom teacher...
Well, I mean, all of these questions are extra classroom teacher because there's one teacher or one para. But beyond the pull-out model, only happens in the title schools? We don't have the funding to do that in non-title schools for the students that need it?
We cannot allocate title dollars to non-title campuses.
I don't mean title dollars, just dollars. The model that we have, the intervention model...
Voyager?
No, in-school intervention model, during school hours.
Tier Two interventions.
Tier Two interventions are only at our title schools?
No. Tier Two intervention is happening at other schools, but it's done by the classroom teacher.
Okay, let me rephrase that. Tier Two, not by classroom teacher. I'm trying to get somewhere with this. I'm trying to understand what we have, just so in my head, I can keep in the back of my mind, what we need, what we're providing to some students. How can we expand it to all the students that need it? So if I'm hearing correctly, the non-classroom teacher, Title Two, Tier Two intervention is only happening in title schools during the class day?
I mean, I don't agree with that statement because it is, because we have really amazing teachers that are providing Tier Two intervention on non-title campuses. So I don't want to dishonor or discredit that word.
Oh, I totally understand that, but we don't have...
But if you're asking if they have a designated person that's providing to them out of local dollars for the purpose of intervening on a non-title campus, no, that is not happening.
Would you say that most of those students that were invited? Remember the last question I asked you? That was, I'm just trying to see where these students fall. Most of the students that qualified for...
Voyager?
Voyager, who can attend. Would you say that they're in title schools, therefore will receive?
I can't, I mean, this is a district number, so it's all campuses.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have some. Steve, do you have any other? Slide 17, have a little look at the data. Please. First of all, thank you for all the effort put into this. I know it wasn't an easy task. Couple of numbers stick out to me. Number, the ninth grade ELA and the 11th grade ELA. Can you talk to them a little bit, what your thoughts are there?
So I would have to dig into the data specifically. But we know that student motivation for 11th grade students, this was the first year that they had ever taken a universal screener. And it was, I mean, our high school, it was hard to keep our high school students motivated to take the assessment. And so a lot of the students in 11th grade were maybe not taking... They were taking the ELA assessment, but they weren't enrolled in that course.
Okay.
And so it's hard to get, to motivate students to... And they were taking course-specific benchmarks and other courses. But last year, we gave the ELA benchmark because we wanted that baseline data to all students.
Okay.
And ninth grade, we have to dig into a little bit deeper. I can tell you that E O Y, we saw a really high increase at end-of-year Galileo in ninth grade. Those would be the incoming 10th graders, so that doesn't necessarily align. But we'd have to dig in a little deeper to know why those kids came in achieving at higher levels.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
But this is this year. You said last year. But these are the BOY numbers, right?
Correct. But what I was saying is, we highlighted some really great freshman data last year. And so it makes me wonder, was that pre-work? Like, did they come in, are they coming in higher? And then it carried? But then you look at 10th grade data and that may not be the same, so. You can make a lot of assumptions. That's why you have to do a little deeper diving to know more.
And slide 22. The next sentence. Students can't move forward without mastering these standards. I think it's just a general comment. That they are going to move forward.
The definition of the essentials, meaning these are vital to them acquiring and having some level of mastery in order for them to take on the next grade-level content. So we're not saying we're not moving kids forward. We're just saying that's the intention and urgency of mastery of this particular standard.
To move them toward to the next grade level.
That's how we selected the essential standards.
Right. Okay. Now, do I have any other questions? Thank you for all your time on this. Anybody else have anything?
Well, I want to make a clarifying comment. I was asking these questions. I'm not trying to at all in any way disparage the work that the teachers are doing.
No.
I am just trying to think how we're going to move the needle for this district.
Yep.
Where do the funds need to go?
Yep.
What do we do next year? And I'm just learning. So I've just learned about this population of students, right? I mean, there's a number to it. You have numbers. 1,497 received a letter inviting them. So the next question is, how many of them aren't able to participate? And then after that is, what are we going to do with our budget next year to plug that gap, right? Like, so that's the intent I wanted to clarify. That's, I'm just thinking.
Absolutely.
Next step type.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Dr. Holt and Dr. Major. Appreciate everything.
No problem.
Thank you. Okay, next up is change orders and agreements. Mr. Rick Carpenter will provide an update to the, on the Bond project updates and actions.
Good evening, Board. I just have a few change orders and agreements. And my recommended action is the board approve the expenditures as presented for $130,304.78. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
I make a motion that we approve the change orders and agreements as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Former member McCosky, second. By who? Thank you, Dr. Thomas Tate. Okay, let's vote. And thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Appreciate it. Okay, motion passes. Very good. Next up is the superintendent's update.
Good evening. Good evening. On yesterday, our new SPS ambassadors. We started our third class of 25 parents and community members. During the first meeting, they were able to tour the Professional Learning and Virtual Learning Center, Studio Alternative Center, the PTA Clothing Bank, and also Ada Fullbright Early Childhood Center. So we're really excited throughout the course of this year that they'll learn and have a behind-the-scenes look at SPS. Want to thank Governor Mike Parson for visiting Kickapoo High School on last week for the ceremonial signing of House Bill Two. He had an opportunity to tour our schools and to also interact with the various students at the high school. 14 of our schools received the Energy Star Awards from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. So really excited, working in collaboration with synergistics that those schools were recognized last week at our senior leadership team meeting. Next Friday, October 6, is our Leader for a Day event in the district. Last spring, we piloted this event at 12 schools. On next Friday, we will have community leaders at all 52 of our campuses. At the end of their visit, we will host a lunch and debrief. And hopefully, future partnerships from our various schools will be created as a result of the business leaders participating. That concludes my update. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any board comments?
I think I might make a comment.
Okay.
I just want to share information, a couple of comments. Ms. Bruner and I were able to go to the Missouri School Board Association Regional Meeting. And you don't know this, but that was probably the best meeting. I, I know, the ones in the past years have been different. But I really enjoyed that very much. I learned a lot. I was asked a lot of questions, which I have now put to Dr. Lathan. But it was a really wonderful networking opportunity. Did you find that?
I thought they provided a lot of information in a very interactive way that was fun, as well as very educational for us as board members.
Had never been interactive before.
That was a big plus.
That was a big plus. The other comment I wanted to make was, I learned something and I just want to share information. So I did not, this is making sense to me. So these pocket constitutions that were brought up by a speaker during the comment period, this makes sense. I did not realize it was an eighth-grade deal. I would have thought that the U.S. Constitution would have been reserved for higher grades. But let me tell you about an experience. So in, and I counted my years backwards. So I would say in the spring of 2021, in the spring, so that would be the end of the year of a seventh-grade advanced core classroom. So these are seventh graders who are advanced placement, which I would assume would carry over to a regular eighth-grade classroom. The final semester assignment was as follows. This is what I recall. I don't, so... The United States Constitution, is it still relevant today? In this classroom, Sabas was the, this was in an English classroom. Sabas was the platform, the ELA platform that was used, that it is still in use in our curriculum today for middle school. And this assignment was accompanied by reading of selective passages by the teacher to the students. The students were never expected to read the passages. And it was not a comprehensive study by any means, of course. But I just found that that assignment was interesting. And so this is information I've had for some time. This is a class that my daughter was in. And I always struggled with, why in seventh grade? Well, tonight, I've been enlightened. Apparently, Constitution study happens in eighth grade. I wasn't in this country in eighth grade, so I didn't know that. But I just wanted to share that information, that I'm disheartened in retrospect that this assignment was given. Not that I think that this isn't a question, but I do think that it was... For the student level, it was inappropriate. And the students did not have an opportunity to study it. This would be something more reserved for a high-school-level course where you're studying the U.S. Constitution. I just wanted to share that experience. That was in our curriculum.
All right, any other board comments? Okay, not hearing any. Next board meeting will be Tuesday, October 24, and it will be a combined meeting. And then that concludes our meeting. We have a recommended action that the board meeting adjourned. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll second it.
All right.
I'll second it.
Let's vote. Okay, motion passes.
Good job, Scott.
Meeting adjourned.